We're going to get started, the formal part of this meeting. The December 8th, 2022 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on at the podium to indicate when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. So is there anyone that would like to speak at this time during this general comment period? Anything that you want to address the commission about? Okay, seeing no one, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the planning and zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, and the minutes of the planning and zoning special meeting held on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second. I'll go with Mr. Sassen on that, and Commissioner Mann. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, but you reviewed them?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2021-18, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is a request for zone classification change from a community shopping center district to a multifamily residential medium-density zoning district for the property located at 110 Hunter's Creek, Hunter's, sorry, 110 Hunter's Lane, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Okay, the public hearing to receive comments, both oral and written regarding the proposed zone classification change is now open. Becky, do you have a staff summary?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt?
Okay.
I need to recuse myself from this.
Yes, you do.
Just letting you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is a piece of property known as 110 Hunter's Lane. It's 0.89 acres, just under, just under one acre. It's currently zoned community shopping center, and the request is to change it to a multifamily residential medium-density. That would allow nine units per acre would be the maximum. The definition for multifamily medium-density residential functions as a buffer or a transition between commercial and lower-density residential areas. Since this piece of property is between the existing Masa Sushi restaurant and the Hunter's Creek subdivision, then that would fit the description. If approved, the development would have to install a 15-foot landscape buffer between the subdivision and Hunter's Creek with a tree every 25 feet as a buffer. It's currently undeveloped property. The future land use map does identify this as a retail portion. If this zone change is approved, the future land use map would be amended along with the approved zone change. They have access to Hunter's Lane, and they have access to utilities, and the drainage has already been accounted for in the Hunter's Creek detention pond.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
From your staff report? Does the applicant or representative of the applicant wish to make any comments on the zone classification change? If you could step forward to the podium, please, and state your names once you get up there, that would be great.
My name is Michael Zhou. So we're going to build with private gate and classic townhome six unit.
Six?
Yeah, six.
Okay.
And it's much less noisy than the commercial shopping center. So we know the Hunter Creek house inside very close, so we try to make nice, clean, no commercial dumpster, so.
Yeah, please, please, just let us know, state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Simmich with RE/MAX Space Center. I work with Michael, and we've been looking at this and trying to make some plans for what we thought might be a really good use for that piece of property. Anyway, they're going to be custom townhomes and gated section, six of those, and then it's going to be, should offer a good buffer between the restaurant, the parking lot, and Hunter's Creek. Everything, you know, we're planning on doing nice landscaping, just really where it would make it, still keep their properties private, yet, you know, create a nice backyard for the townhome property. And so anyway, instead of really putting more shopping center space into Friendswood, we thought this would be a nice alternative because there's not very many custom townhomes in Friendswood. So we thought maybe that might be a nice add.
Okay, anything else at this point? We will, I most likely, we will have questions when we get to the discussion on the dais. We'll probably call you back up, but we'll let you know if you need to come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change?
Oh, for?
For making this change. Okay, and we have, I'll go through the cards first. Is there anyone, and I'm going to read this just as part of our process, but is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? And I will go through these cards first and call everybody up, and if I miss someone, you know, please raise your hand and we'll bring you up at that time. And I will apologize profusely at the beginning for any way I butcher your name. With a last name like Matranga, I'm used to seeing my name butchered, so I apologize if I do it to yours. Three minutes. Yes. They haven't started yet, but yes, yeah, we mentioned that earlier, there's a three-minute limit. Megan Terminella? Please tell me how bad I did.
No, you did great, Megan Terminella. Thank you for hearing me. I'm the homeowner at 1705, which is that center property directly backing up to the property they're discussing. I bought the property and built on it 12 years ago knowing it was zoned for commercial, and of course, when you buy and build a house of that caliber, that was in consideration. So changing that would be obviously devastating. We knew that it was commercial, it could have business hours, low noise, it would be aesthetically pleasing. However, in the definition of what they've applied for under medium-density housing, it says it's areas of relatively intense concentration. And it also says that there needs to be large, open spaces consisting of common areas and recreational facilities, none of which there's room for there. It also says that they can go back as far as a zero-foot rear setback, which clearly would affect my house. As far as what I've seen from the plans, it's a two-story with a rear master bedroom window which would be directly facing the windows of my children. For these reasons, I believe this classification doesn't fit within this zoning and within this location, and I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I'm looking down, making notes, because I want to make sure that we address those Okay, next on my list is Rob Mulcahy?
That was perfect.
Oh, y'all are just setting me up.
Yes, that's a hard one, unless you've seen Mash, and then it's not so bad. Okay, so I'm also, I'm actually Megan's neighbor, so I live right next door to her in 1701. You know, we moved in a few months ago before we bought the house. We checked the zoning to see what was behind us, and we're happy with that commercial shopping, or the community shopping center zoning, just knowing the setbacks that would be available, you know, to the rear of the house and the business hours that Megan mentioned and those kind of things. You know, from a city perspective, the intersection there at Hunter's Lane and 518 already has horrible traffic a lot of the time, you know, especially during peak hours, and adding six more homes, you know, in addition to the 53, I think, that are in Hunter's Creek would add additional traffic there at those powers, or at those kind of peak hours, would make it even worse. You know, and I know that the plan was mentioned to be six townhomes, but I, you know, I see the definition in the MRFM is up to nine per acre, I guess eight maybe in that point, eight, nine, eight, nine of an acre. So, you know, I get that the current plans say that, but changing the zoning could potentially mean that there could be even more houses than are proposed now. You know, I think those are kind of the main two things, you know, I think it would be there's some concern that there could be like invasion of privacy there, depending on, you know, if the zero lot line that is allowed and MRFM is implemented, and then, of course, the traffic.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Next is John Penny.
Hello, hello, good evening. So really, just to echo what they've said, we knew that was commercial from the beginning. I'm really interested in seeing the drainage part of this. As you know, with the new pest store that's gone in, not only has Gina's flooded, so has the gym. So there's a, there's a huge concern with flooding in that area. That's, I measured, it's almost five feet above the fence. So the fence that they're in, in the back, that lands five feet above, so they're already at a, you know, toe looking down, right? So, you know, that's a huge issue for me is the drainage part. Also, there is no other entrance besides right in front of our entrance. They've got an entrance going right into there, and that's a huge backup right there. You're looking at between three and four people per household, so, and these are long-term rentals, so you're talking about people coming in and out of these properties, and, you know, that to me is a very big concern. The density part is a huge concern, having six to eight, you know, 32 people living in one area, and when you actually look at the plans, there isn't that common area. Where are they going to park? How are they going to park? We already have Chara, we've got the other one that park up and down that road, it's a huge hazard, someone's going to get killed. I mean, just with the amount of people that park on the side of that road, you've got kids coming out, going to ballet, and it's a huge issue in that area. So for me, the main thing, drainage, these long-term leases is a huge deal with people coming in and out, and then the density within that area, putting 32 people, you know, in that area possibly at once, and a revolving door in and out of those people is not what we really need at this time. So, thank you.
No, thank you, thank you for your comments. Okay, now I can't read the writing. Okay, I'm going to go with Jerry Corona.
Well, thank you for hearing us. I live further down the street. I moved into this neighborhood about five years ago. My biggest concern is the type of people that are going to be living there. I have young children and high school-aged children, and to me, it's about the safety and security of our neighborhood, because the gate, you know, stays open during morning when the bus comes in and out in the afternoon. Who's to say these new neighbors want to go for a little walk in our neighborhood, and, you know, we are not going to have control over, you know, background checks, who rents those apartments, the type of people that live there, et cetera. And then the biggest concern to me is, you know, collectively, we pay over a million dollars in property taxes in that neighborhood if you add up all the houses, and probably over a million dollars. So the biggest concern I have is the decline in property values.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ben Mills, 509 Hunter's Lane, I'm with Hunter's Creek Estates Homeowners Association. Again, I just want to echo, I don't believe there's been a great information share about what this plan actually looks like. In other words, I saw it by kind of second-hand information earlier this week, and it's a clean plan, and I'm fundamentally not for or against, I'm really in a neutral posture. I do not agree that associating multifamily or rentals with any demographic is the right approach to anything. I actually would tend to think that a buffer residential thought that's properly maintained, has the proper exterior common area maintenance program in place, are leaning and going the right direction. Our concern, as you're going to continue to hear, is traffic queuing. It is a raging mess up there. And so where we could sit around and debate, is it good for Hunter's Creek Estates or bad for Hunter's Creek Estates? I still sit at a healthy 50/50 on that conversation. I think there needs to be more information, and our neighborhood needs to understand the good versus, the positive versus the negative by understanding the traffic impact, number one. And secondly, not just risk of flooding and conversations about 500-year floodplains and 100-year floodplains. I'm still looking for the guy that measured the 500-year floodplain, I haven't met him yet. I don't think anybody... I wasn't going there, Mr. Sassen. At any rate, I think we'd like to understand about the traffic, and we'd like to understand also about not just the flooding issue, but about the maintenance of our detention pond. We have an annual HOA budget of around $68,000, and about 30% of that is not just maintenance and repairs of us keeping that entry very beautiful into Hunter's Creek Estates for the benefit of the adjacent businesses which currently contribute nothing towards our budget. We would like to see a proper share for the detention pond maintenance and the entry landscape right-of-way maintenance on top of a traffic queuing plan, and those are some of the key things that I wanted to say we would like to see and be able to share with the 53 members of our association.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next is Carrie, and I apologize, but I can't read the, you're no longer speaking. And Don. And Don, if you could give us your last name, please.
Oh, Scott, Don Scott.
Thank you, sir.
So I happen to be at the front gate also, and some of the issues that have been raised off so far, I would agree with all of them. One of my problems is where they're going to have the gate that comes into that community. It's like 15 feet away from our gate, and it's going to be gated, so that, that's an issue when our gate opens or closes, that gate opens or closes. You have one side coming in that opens in, when it goes out, when they come out of that neighborhood, it goes out. So that could be a problem. You have a traffic problem. Mr. Ben mentioned about the retention ponds. Our subdivision pays for all of that mowing, upkeep, et cetera. This business that's occupying the areas right now need to be responsible for some of that cost, which they're not. So there's a lot of issues on that little spot right there, Hunter's Lane, that you guys need to know. It needs to be fixed as well as not having those new condos or townhomes built. Nobody in our neighborhood, and we pay high taxes, is going to agree with what is being planned. So I hope you guys will understand that, and I'm pretty sure if that, if you lived in that neighborhood, you would be in here like we are today protesting, and I hope you guys come to the right conclusion that we don't appreciate what's going on, we like to leave it as commercial, which is why we bought the property there anyway, because we knew it was going to be commercial, and we don't like these last-minute changes that we think are just very unfair. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone that we've missed that would like to speak on this topic during this public hearing? If you could please step up and tell us your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Janet LaComte. I live at 421 Hunter's Lane, and the gentleman a couple of times before this said something about, let's weigh the good and the bad about this whole process. There is no good. My husband and I bought our house 10 years ago because the subdivision was small. We didn't have a lot of amenities, we don't have to pay a lot of extra fees, it's small, it's great for older people, and we just love the neighborhood. What, it's only going to devalue our, all of our neighbors' property, not just the ones in the front, but we live in the back. I have flooded, so there are flood, you know, zoning issues for flooding and all the above. Everybody here has spoken and said exactly what is wrong with this proposal. I've got a proposal. I propose that that road, we make it a road to go over to take a left out of our subdivision and go over to HEB, because when we go out of our subdivision, we've got to now cross two lanes of traffic, go over to the U-turn, make a U-turn, and sometimes people are coming out of the other subdivision, and that is a nightmare. So, you know, to consider putting something that's going to devalue our property, that is going to cause more traffic, and, and just be a nightmare all the way around. I just can't see anything good coming of any of this. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that I may have missed? Well, please come to the podium and tell us your name, please.
Hi, my name is Benjamin LaComte. I live at 421 Hunter's Lane as well. Once again, in agreement with the fellow homeowners that are presently having to be a part of whatever you guys decide. The one thing that people are missing, though, is there's only one way in, and there's only one way out of this subdivision. If something were to happen because of this multifamily and being so close with the zero property line as the first speaker had mentioned, it would be a disaster for us to have to evacuate that neighborhood for any reason, be it a helicopter crash or anything else of that nature. And I think what would happen is that we would be held prisoners in our own property because there is only one street in, one street out, and one gate. We don't have any other options of getting out of that subdivision, and that has crossed my mind many times, and I would like that to be on your minds as well, about being a prisoner in your own neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Mary Garnett, and I am a deep-rooted Friendswood resident, and I'm not up here to talk about myself, I'm up here to talk about my children who live in this community. We bought in this community about five years ago, four or five years ago, after my husband and I came back to Friendswood, because this is where we want to be, this is where we want to raise our family. Every piece of property in Friendswood does not need growth. This property is deemed commercial, great, put commercial in, but re-echoing what was just said, there is one entrance in. You tell me there's a fire in this complex, that they can safely eradicate a fire and protect our homes, protect us, not block us in? There is a flood, those homes, all that water comes in here, no matter what drainage plan has been implemented. Sanctuary Gym recently flooded due to the heavy rains we had. Our streets flooded, covered in water. We didn't cover in water in the front sections during Harvey. It got up to the mailbox on the third day and retreated. Never once since we have lived there has the water been as drastically impulsive as it has been recently. My children, my, my two young boys will be fourth-year generation Friendswood alumni. My husband, myself, my mom, why, why continue to grow and push homes when you have a safe community? There are apartment vacancies here in Friendswood, there are condo complexes. In 10 years, my children are going to look at this, 15 years, it's not going to be as nice as it is when it's built. This becomes their problem. The traffic becomes their problem. It's great in theory now, I am not for it in any way, shape, or form. If you've driven by recently, you know that now not only are we held prisoner to turning right, there's been a fence built where you can no longer pull through to go to the new businesses. You have blocked us in, you have blocked us in. We would go to HEB through there to reduce traffic and safety for my children, we'd go and walk, we can no longer do that. Every person, every car, every vehicle you bring in drastically increases the chance of something happening to our children, to our families. My, someone gets in an accident, that affects a family in our community. You're pouring into a very concentrated area additional traffic.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
My name's Cameron Putnam, I live at 1710 Hunter's Forest.
Was it Cameron, sorry?
Cameron Putnam.
Okay, thank you.
At 1710 Hunter's Forest. I have to kind of think of the recent past couple of years, three years of Friendswood, kind of mirroring Pearland for a bit there, right? A lot of expansion. Expansion has its benefits, but really, the main concern for me, and I moved to the neighborhood two years ago, there's nowhere for water to go. There's nowhere for it to go. You put concrete up, you build structures, it sits on top, doesn't soak into the soil, the ground gets dry, there's nowhere for it to go. It just rises. These homes, I don't know if there's any pictures, have anyone seen anything, but Hunter's Creek, the water was up to here, to the stop sign. People got water in those homes, and I am, that's one of the main things I'm concerned about. Yes, traffic sucks. It sucks right there, it's terrible. You open the gate, everyone's lined up to get into the ballet, people are pulling in a Masa Sushi. Now I can only imagine, I pull out, right to my immediate left, there's another gate, hey, there's a gate, there's a gate. Hey, you want a gate too? You get a gate. Everyone gets a gate. It's, it's a little too much. So if you're sitting thinking about commercial or making a road, road sounds nice, but quick flip property, put some houses up, sell for 500, build for 300, 200,000 profit, because you can't do anything else with it, it's a no-go for me. It's not really conducive to what Friendswood is about. If you want to build, go build in Pearland. Go build somewhere else, because in the Galleria area or Houston, you can go build your townhomes, and that's kind of like the wrong kind of family style you want here anyway, I don't think. I lived there, I lived there for 10 years in the Galleria, that's what they have, they have the three-story little, you know, cereal box-shaped down homes, little patio on top, you can put a little patio table up there, it's great, but it's too condensed, it's too much, and I think coming in and out of there, you would have twice as amount of time to get out of there with two gates opening. It just sounds like it just, it's like a big cluster in my head. So, with that said, please consider the new generation coming in, new kids, I have a two-year-old, I got one on, another one on the way, keep that into consideration, and, you know, I wanted to move to a small town, I didn't want to move to growth, and I, growth is good, but keep it, keep it separate from subdivisions that are trying to be private and quiet. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, sir, you already spoke.
Can I say something?
No, last comment then, please step forward, though, so that the microphone can hear you. I want to make sure that we get everybody's comments, I don't want to leave you hanging out there.
Just a couple of things, that what the individuals have mentioned, some of the things I like to bring up again is about the retention pond, like for instance, I live at the very front, and water was almost up to my mailbox, so now you're going to be on more property that puts more water in the retention pond, like he mentioned, that's bad. Also, the young man and the lady mentioned that they're going to have a separation, a green area between the concrete there now and the new development. So then, just in pass that, they're going to have the entries where we just mentioned about the gate swinging out and swinking in, problems. So, and then supposedly, where the neighbors that back up to that property, they're going to build it where the house can look out and see them, and you're going to have like trees planted there. There's a lot of problems that you guys haven't even dreamed or thought about, that are really issues if you allow the building of what they're projecting. There's also a parking lot in between the six units that's going to be multi-areas for people to park. I'm assuming there are going to be garages for the particular houses. Once again, you have concrete, additional water that possibly would have soaked into the land versus draining into the retention ponds, which filled up when Harvey came, and water was almost up to my house, and I'm at the very front. Like he mentioned, there were several houses back in the property, they flooded. So I want you guys to consider all of those issues in allowing this process to go in rezoning that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing for this Okay, the public hearing for this topic is now closed. The commission will now consider making a recommendation on the requested zone classification change. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any second? Becky, just checking, any additional staff comments?
The only other thing from the city for now is we did receive a letter from the homeowners' association discussing sharing and maintenance fees, things like that, for the road and the medians. Karen, city attorney, has drafted a memo that we will send back to them, but unfortunately, that is not something that we can legally consider in a zone change. That's considered conditional zoning, saying you give us this, and okay, we'll approve your zoning. So we, that's not something that the commission can take into account. And then the only other thing I had to add-
That's between two private groups.
Yes, sir. It's, that's a private civil matter that the city cannot get involved in. We do have landscape buffers that are required, so in regards to the comments about the zero-foot setback, that would be multifamily to multifamily. They could do zero, like units next to each other, because this is going to be sandwiched between, if it was approved, between a commercial shopping center and a single-family residential, they would have to have a 15-foot landscape buffer literally on all four sides of the property. So that's part of what shrinks their developable area. But I can answer any other questions y'all might have.
Okay.
So with regards to that setback, what is the setback if it remains commercial?
If it stays commercial, it's going to be the same 15-foot landscape buffer, because it's going to be commercial up against single-family residential, so it would remain-
On all four sides or just on the residential side?
Just on the residential side.
So there is more room to develop if it stays commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
For higher-density property activities?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll start with you, Commissioner Sassen.
Okay, just one clarification, or two clarifications, Becky.
Yes, sir.
You had said that it could have up to nine units. I, I did some arithmetic and said .89 times nine per acre. I had .8, .01, so I would think the max they could actually put in there would be eight.
So the zoning-
Although they planned to do six, so it's, it's a moot point perhaps.
The zoning district allows nine per acre, but yes, because this property is not quite an acre-
It's .89 acres, then I, you know, you multiply that out, you get eight, or 8.01.
Yes.
So I would think, yeah, so the, I would think the max would be eight, and, and-
Setbacks, then we shrink it further.
Well, yeah, right, but, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And, and then can you enlighten me a little bit about detention requirements for this?
So the detention requirements, this is one of the properties that was included in the Hunter's Creek subdivision detention pond, so the volume-
So they already contributed to the Hunter's Creek detention pond?
It's my understanding, yes. The volume has already been accounted for in the pond.
Okay.
Whenever they go to build, whether it's commercial or single-family or multifamily, they will have to go to the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and they will have to go through the City of Friendswood's Engineering Department.
To, to cover that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, this is, this is another tough one. Up here, we have to balance a lot of different needs. The, the requirements, you know, of the, of the, the rights of the landowner to do what he sees fit with his own land, like everyone wants to be able to do what they want with their own land. The rights of the neighbors, the needs of the city, the, the long-term plan and, and what people really want. And so it's kind of a balance, and usually everyone doesn't get what they want. In this case, we, there was a lot of, a lot of passion. I wanted to compliment all the people that came up here. It takes a certain amount of courage to come up and stand before a, a group like this, and I usually don't have it in this case, and so I'm, I'm impressed that so many people have, have come up and expressed their views, and quite eloquently, by the way. The, the flaw I saw in some of the logics, you know, there's, there's a privacy issue, there's certainly a traffic issue, there's a flooding issue, people are concerned about safety, they're concerned about a decline in property values. There was an issue about the gates potentially connecting up. I can talk about that a little bit, that when we get to the actual layout, we'll be talking about, about what can be approved on that. So we'd be looking at specifics when the specifics come before us. But right now, we're just talking about a zone change. So the real question that's here is not whether we make this eligible for townhomes or leave it alone as an empty lot, which I think everybody out here wants to leave it as an empty lot. The question is, do you have it allowed as townhomes, or do you allow an Arby's to go in there, or a tattoo shop, or some other thing that would also potentially affect your privacy, your traffic, your flooding, your safety? It's not an issue that's yes or no. I, I agree, people would like to have a road go through there, and, and I guess the homeowners could divvy their money up, give these people a better deal than the townhome is, and buy the lot and put a road through there. But asking someone else to donate a road to your subdivision, probably not reasonable. And so you have, you have a property owner that has some rights here, too, that you need to look at. So the question is, do you, what do you want? You want commercial. What I heard was you want it to be empty. I would too. If I lived next to it, I would like it to be empty. It's been empty for a long time. That's really nice. It's not going to be empty. Somebody's going to build something there. The question is what's going to be built there? Is it going to be the townhomes, like's being proposed now, or is it going to be something else, commercial, which would potentially put a lot more traffic than what you're trying to avoid? And in that case, you don't get a, a say. It's already zoned commercial. They'll just come and build it. And so that's not a, a thing that you can protest necessarily. It's, it's set up to be that. Somebody could put a McDonald's there, put a 30-foot sign up with a big couple of Ms.'s. And I don't think you want that either, but that's what you've got right now. So I think, my sense is, in a properly-designed, master-planned city, you have ranches out in the suburbs, you have single-family residential, you have higher-density residential, and then you have commercial. So you have people in apartments or townhomes that can walk to the nearby places. And so that's kind of how a properly-designed city is, and it kind of, kind of fits that, to be honest. And I think it's less traffic than the alternative you have right now if they actually were able to put in, put in the commercial that you have. I think the flooding needs to be addressed, but I think that will be addressed when they build whatever they build, whether it be commercial or, or residential. The issues are all valid, but they're valid in both cases, is what I'm saying. So my, my sense is, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be against the most majority of the room, and I'm, I'm going to be supporting this for, for my own, my, the reasons I've, I've
Mr. Hinkley.
So, yeah, traffic there, it's bad. I mean, I've, I've been in there. My, my daughters went to Chara, so I understand that. Don't necessarily have any answer to that, but we're going to have traffic, whether it's residential or commercial, right? Drainage, as Commissioner Sassen said, that's, it's something we, we consider, but at the same time, it's really in the, the hands of the Galveston County Drainage District. As far as the townhomes, you know, a nice set of six beautiful townhomes, I think, would be a good, good buffer. But the thing for me on that is that we're not necessarily approving six townhomes right here. We're just approving a zone change. A different developer could come in at some point and develop a different type of multifamily residential, so that's something to keep in mind. As far as traffic and traffic impacts, that, that's something we also consider, but it's also something that we cannot necessarily use to, to make our final decision, so. And, and really, like, like I said, the big thing is, is if we did approve this, we're not necessarily guaranteed that six beautiful townhomes, okay? So, that's it for me.
Commissioner Mann.
I just want to say, I, I also appreciate everybody coming out and speaking. That is exactly what this process is for, and, and, and it is difficult sometimes to come out and express yourself. And I, I listened to every person, and I took notes on every, for everybody, and, and I, and I wrote down some of the problems, and I think that Mr. Sassen kind of spoke to some of them. If, you know, we spoke a lot about traffic, but if another Chara school went in there, the traffic would be even worse than, than a couple condos going in there. If, you know, if it was a four-story building, then the privacy would be even worse than a condo. And I, so I think that, that the drainage, if something is going to go in there, and, and the rights of the property owner are important as well, I hear every, what everybody has said, and, and to, to know that when the plat comes out and we start talking about traffic, we start talking about drainage, those will all be reviewed. They will be reviewed by city experts, they will be reviewed by us, and that'll all go up. And it, and it is a consideration. The last thing we want to do, we, I live in Friendswood. I want Friendswood to be great also. So I, I, I hear what everybody's saying, but I don't see a reason why I would say, no, they can't do this here because of a reason that it wouldn't be just as bad, if not worse, if it stays commercial right now. And I think that the, the, the point of the, the multifamily medium is to be that buffer between the big bright lights shining from a McDonald's M or another school going and causing ridiculous traffic. It is that buffer there. So, and right now, I'm leaning to support it. I, I, I understand your concerns, and I would have the same concerns. I just don't, I don't see how it would be better if it were a commercial. I agree, if it stayed empty, that would be ideal, but that's not reality. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter.
Yeah, good evening, and I, I want to echo the thanks that have already been expressed here, for all of you coming out and sharing your opinions and your thoughts with us. It's really important for us to hear what you have to say and to hear some of your concerns. A lot of what you expressed, unfortunately, though, is outside the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You heard a little bit about that earlier from some of my colleagues, right? The drainage is really the responsibility of the Galveston County Drainage District. We have in the past tried to take traffic into consideration, and that is, again, not something that is in the purview of this particular commission. And so I hear your frustration. I, I live very close to this location, so I really absolutely understand the traffic. I live it and breathe it every day. But as you heard from Commissioner Mann, my, part of my fear is that if we leave this as commercial, it's going to be worse than if it has some level of residential. And so I, I, I'm kind of trying to weigh the different aspects of everything that I heard here today, and I too took a lot of notes on what y'all had to say. I'm concerned that if we put in some kind of a commercial business or businesses in that location, the traffic will be orders of magnitude worse. You've already expressed, several of you expressed your concern about the traffic when Chara has classes, right? And I've seen that, again, firsthand. I've seen a lot of incidents that have taken place along that entire strip. But again, I'm going to have to go back to the purview of this commission is whether or not it's within the legal bounds for this, this zoning change, and whether or not it makes sense with regards to the master plan of the community. So again, I think I'm probably leaning to, more towards what the rest of the commissioners you've heard speak about, which is to go ahead and approve this, because I feel very strongly that having some kind of a residential buffer is a lot better than a commercial buffer between the beautiful homes that are in, in Hunter's Creek and the commercial activities that already exist at that intersection.
Thank you. Commissioner Bounce.
Yes, I would like to know if, if a current information states how high or how many floors do the condos-
Would you like, would you like to call the developer up?
Yes, if you, if you could come up.
Two floors.
Well, go ahead, if you could just come to the podium.
Sorry. The house is going to be two floors.
Okay, just, so it's a maximum of two floors?
Yeah, regular.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I may, remind me, Becky, what is the, what's the limit right now on commercial? It's 40 feet, right?
No, no. Forty feet for all the residential, sorry.
I'm sorry, what's the, what's the limit for commercial?
It is 40 feet, but you can go up to 70 feet if you have enough of a setback.
So up to, up to 70 feet, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, what everybody, I'll reiterate, what everybody says, thank you.
Sir, if you'd just stay up there just for a second longer, please.
Yeah.
I don't want to, anything else? We're here tonight to talk about your zone change, and so I just want to make sure we will see, and saying, Becky, we will see a site plan for this. If we were to, if we were to approve such a zone change, we would see a site plan for this? Yes or no?
Yes, sir. You would actually see the preliminary plat, the final plat, and then the site plan, because multifamily is considered a type of commercial, because we do impose more regulations on them than we would a single-family residence.
Although not maybe quite within my, thank you, within our purview to, to ask. I'm going to ask it anyway. This, this property has been empty for, for many years, since you've had masa sushi there in that complex for, for many years.
Yes.
How many years has it been there? Do you remember?
Seven years.
Okay. And originally, it was designed as retail, it was a community shopping. Why, why do you want to do townhomes versus-
Because I really, I know that lots of people come here, and then they mad us, but if I really put the, the commercial shopping center, it's really bad for them. So I don't want to be enemy with them.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's your reasoning.
I put the regular town-
Let him speak. Everybody, we were, he was very quiet when everybody else-
I put the regular townhome is, I know your guys' house very expensive.
If you could address us, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I know, their house expensive, but we're going to not build a cheap one. We, we build high class.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that might be all the questions I had for you, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm so, I am so, I am so sorry. I, I tried to make that clear early on, that we, based on our process. But there will be another opportunity, another public hearing when it goes before council, either way.
Right, right.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. I can speak to you after the meeting's over about this. I, I can't take questions from the, from the floor at this time. So, and, and I took lots of notes as well. I want to echo Commissioner Sassen, what, what he said, that you guys did a great job explaining your issues. You were very clear, and I think we all appreciate that, and appreciate how many people showed up. Shows how much you care. I did hear a lot about traffic. I did hear a lot about rentals, and I heard about, and that was the question, that was the one. Sir, I apologize profusely. If you could come back up here, and I'll, I won't do this to you again.
No problem.
Although, we're here for a zone change. I just would like to understand your current thought, is this going to be, you're selling these, or leasing these, or renting these?
Oh, it's going to be, I own it, renting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's your current plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's not what we're here tonight to talk about. That's not in our purviews. You're done. Thank you, sir. I just wanted to understand what your plan was. So, the flooding, I think we've talked to you and let everybody know and communicated. We understand that concern. We all live in Friendswood, and that's a huge concern for everyone in Friendswood. But that's also going to be, have to be addressed at the Drainage District. That's not part of our purview. We just have to make sure that they sign off before, before we're done. I'm looking down my list, the maintenance of the detention, the, the detention was inclusive of this property back when it was designed. We heard that from city staff. I'm just going through. Sorry, just bear with me a second. I don't want to leave anything out. We, we talked about the type of people. Again, I, I just don't think that's appropriate for us to consider at this point, for a zone change. I, I don't want to be duplicative, but I tend to agree with these folks that you've heard tonight, that said, look, we're putting ourselves in the shoes of the property owner, and we have to think, okay, if I own this property, if I invested in this property, I want to, to do something with it. That's his right, and that's our right for our homes as well, within the bounds of the rules of HOAs in the city. And he's, they're trying to live within the rules. He thinks he needs to do this, to develop this. We also put ourselves in the shoes of the neighbors. We do absolutely think about what, what this was in our backyard, and we would be here speaking just like you, but sitting up here, we get to see a broader swath of Friendswood, to see a broader swath of Friendswood. So, we have to consider the homeowner, the property owner, we have to consider you as homeowners next door, and the other businesses that are surrounding this. Does this zone change fit into that neighborhood? And then the last, we gotta think about the people that are on the other side of Friendswood, that are maybe looking for homes to rent in Friendswood. We have to think about all those people, not just, you know, being a homeowner, and I know everybody gets that. You're all smart. You all spoke very well this evening. So, it's a unique position that we can't just take your viewpoint. We have to take everybody's viewpoint into mind, and what's in the best interest of the whole of Friendswood. And I agree with you all. We all agree that the traffic in that area is bad. And I come through 518 all the time as well. So, with that, I think I have no other comments. One second, just let me, give me one second, make sure I don't want to miss anything. I think that, I think that's, that's it. And I'll just echo what Commissioner Mann said, that this is, multifamily residential medium density is intended in the zoning for Friendswood to be a buffer. And I guess that's the one point I would make to everybody. It doesn't help what we're saying. None of this is gonna help make you feel better, and you're gonna go to council and express your concerns to them as well. But this is very unusual for us. We're almost, in five years I've been doing this, this is the, we're always hearing about people that want to take single-family residential or some sort of residential zoning, and they want to make it commercial. And then people come up, and actually, you folks, some of you folks have come up for, you know, in Hunters Creek, on a property on 528, as a matter of fact. But we're normally hearing that that's what everybody's concerned about, is, oh, we don't want smells, we don't want concern, we don't want, you know, businesses behind us, dumpsters, and people making deliveries at, you know, odd hours. That's what we normally hear. So, this is unusual, but absolutely, your concerns are very, very, very valid. And I really greatly appreciate hearing from everybody here tonight. So, with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of this zone request, all opposed. The motion passes six to one.
Five to one.
Five to one. Thank you, because we have a recusal. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Yes, Becky. No, sir. We'll be with you in a second. Yes, he does. We'll be. No, 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 sorry. I just assumed that the Hunters Creek. Thank you.
And folks, hey, we still have a meeting going on here, so if you want to have a conversation, I would ask that you please step out into the hallway. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
Feel free to talk in the hallway, outside the room, please. Okay, our next action item is a request for a specific use permit to allow for NAICS use, 8131 religious organizations within the current single-family residential zoning district remaining in place at the property located at 1376 West Parkwood, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas.
Wait, 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 wait.
The public hearing to receive comments, both oral and written regarding this request for a specific use permit, is now open. Becky, if you could provide the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So, this property is 1376 West Parkwood Avenue. It's on 528, close to where the Public Safety Building is. It is currently a one-acre tract. That High Point Church is looking to change the zone, not change the zoning, add a specific use permit. They would like to use this as their administrative building. So, the site currently exists of an existing house, and it would be renovated for the church administrative offices. No major changes are being proposed to the outside of the building. They would install landscaping to comply with the community overlay district requirements, and they will also be adding a parking lot of 11 spaces for six, an estimated six staff members plus any type of visitors. The property is currently bordered by all single-family tracts. The underlying single-family would stay on this property, and the long-term goal of the church is to take the larger piece, you can see to the southwest of it, and build their sanctuary. They would retain commercial at the front to comply with our long-term goals, and then use the rear portion for the sanctuary, which, that would have to come back to y'all at a later date. But that's just their thought process on this. The property has access to 528. They have existing utilities, and they have already started working with the Drainage District and the Army Corps of Engineers on drainage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is the applicant here for this particular request, and would they like to make, or a representative of the applicant would like to make any comments?
Yes, please. My name is, yeah, Scott Nemar, and I'm the pastor at High Point Church. We moved here to Friendswood 2016 from Baytown, and was happy to get to this community, and everything that was described has been talked about tonight as well. We came to this community and while we love it. I have five kids. A couple of them are already out of the house. The other ones are here in school, involved in activities. High Point Church is about, is about family. It's about community. It's about everything that makes Friendswood great. And, you know, we're excited to be able to put down some roots here, and to be able to put down some stakes here, and really to come alongside the community, and to be a community support in the best way that we can. And we already try to do that. We're still a portable church. We currently rent from the school district at Friendswood Junior High. We started at Bells in Westwood, five, it'd be almost five years, February 2018. We have about 400 people in attendance right now. Church is growing, and lots of great Friendswood families that are here. And whenever we found this piece of property, it just felt like a good next step for us, and we know there's lots of steps in the process, and we are willing and ready to go through any of those things, just to be able to make sure that we're doing things the right way. One of our core values at our church is excellence, is our spirit, and I want you guys to know that from my heart and from me to you guys, that we are all about excellence. And I've, I live in one of the front houses, one of the front model homes, just outside of Eagle Lakes, which is one of the original Friendswood lakes. So, I drive by this, the church property now all the time. I have always said that it is the garage sale house. It seems like there's always a garage sale going in the front yard. We have inherited the tenants that are there. They are on a month-to-month basis, according to the leases. It is helping church with income right now, but we are actually very excited to be able to make that look a whole lot better up to the standards of Friendswood. And so, just thank you guys for your professionalism. Thank you guys for considering this, and really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Seeing no one additional, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Would you, would you like to? Well, okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else, the public hearing for this topic is now closed. The commission will now consider making a recommendation on this requested specific use permit. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I'll start with you, Commissioner Rives. Any questions, comments?
Just a few comments. I think that they are going about this the right way to fit our overall city plan, you know, for the front, I think 300 feet is gonna be commercial. The back is more private for the church. I think that's exactly what we want along that corridor, and it's hard to develop anything deeper than that. So, short of a big box or something, we don't want. I think this is a good proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Rives, although that's not required at this point. They're just, we're just on the zone change. I.
Specific use permit?
A specific use permit, that's right. Thank you. I had a question, mostly for Becky, I guess. There was a couple of things in there. I wanted to make sure I was clear. You had said the adjacent property was bought by the same entity. That was the 1406? Okay. There were two adjacent properties. It wasn't called out in the?
I apologize. Yes, to the south.
Yeah, okay. I figured that was it, but I wasn't. I wanted to clarify that. I wanted to make sure, it said that there were sufficient utilities. I know water has been a problem down this end, and the requirement for water might go up by putting an office building there, but it should be still sufficient.
The water for an office building is sufficient. They are currently on septic.
Right. Yeah, that was my next question. They said the septic system will need to be rerouted. Where would it be rerouted to? I don't know what that meant, really.
Where the aeration comes out, they're gonna adjust it, because they're making some site changes.
So, they're going to improve the septic system. They're not gonna connect to the sewer system?
Not right now. If or when they develop anything further, they will have to tie into city sewer. But for this small building, it's sufficient.
The next step is a whole nother deal. Yeah, I understand. Okay. And then some, just some minor things. Teach me something. It said on the paper that there'd be a four-foot sidewalk. I thought we required a five-foot sidewalk.
That was probably a typo on my part, then. It is a five-foot sidewalk, because their drawings originally said six foot, and I had them change it to five foot. I may have just typed it wrong.
I'd have to look. Somewhere, somewhere it said four foot on here. On the map, it says four, five feet? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Yeah, these other questions aren't germane to this point. Well, I guess it is germane. Can I ask the minister to step up again, please? Yeah. Are you, it wasn't clear to me, are you planning to keep the two oaks in front of the house there too as well? I know you were gonna put Bradford pears down the side, but you didn't mention about, you said that the house was gonna be unaffected, but I didn't know if you were gonna have to take out those trees.
According to whatever the recommendation of the city would be, I think they are too big and a little bit too close to the house. We would definitely replace them with something that looked much, much nicer, though. And so, but that would have to be basically whatever the city gave us.
So, what I'm hearing you say is we haven't decided yet?
Right.
Okay. And the only other thing I would encourage you is, I know you're planning on Bradford pears up and down that street. Bradford pears tend to get brittle and break off and don't get that tall. If you might think about oaks, but that's just a personal preference and not a requirement.
It's been quite a discussion among some of the church.
Oh, is that right? I mentioned there's a lot of passionate among the congregation on issues like that.
I've got people bringing me pictures of trees all the time, so, but it's been great.
I don't want to wade into such a deeply political.
But I do like oaks also.
Yeah, well, it is kind of the spirit of Friendswood. And so, it's on the map and all that kind of stuff. So, I would encourage that, but I will leave you to, I won't add another voice to the din on the tree controversy associated.
Absolutely. If I could clarify too, also, I believe the four foot that you saw, if I just go by my memory, is I think we were gonna do a sidewalk from the crosswalk back to the parking lot that we're putting in, and I think that would be four foot, not the one going across the front.
Okay, maybe I caught it in the notes and I didn't refer to the right area.
That's what I, that's what I remember reading, but I just want to make sure.
That may be where I saw. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
I agree, Commissioner Mann.
Yeah, he might as well stay there.
Yeah, sure. Commissioner Carter?
So, if I could ask, just some clarification, because I didn't fully understand what, something you said relative to what I read in the documentation. You said there's currently month-to-month renters that are there. When you turn this into offices, are they gonna continue to be there?
No.
Okay. So, so when, so this is until you actually transition? Okay, I didn't understand that.
And the reason I mentioned the month-to-month means we don't have a long process for that to happen. Hopefully, upon approval, then we would be able to move forward as quickly.
Well, so that was gonna be my question, then, Becky, to you. So, does the approval of this then change that? Because if there's currently renters that are there, and we make a change away from a, what is traditional, like a residential, to this plant or this specific unit, does that, can we, how does that work?
So, the specific use permit is an overlay on top of the existing zoning. The underlying zoning is currently single-family residential, so it'll remain there unless, for some reason, the church ever decides they want to change the underlying zoning. So, the renters, they can stay there, and even if it was.
Even with the approval of the special use permit?
Correct. And even if it wasn't single-family underlying, they would be in existing non-conforming use, so they could stay there as long as they stayed there. But once they were gone and things were converted, then you can't go back. So, they, it's not gonna harm them any.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out, like.
So, a specific use permit is a, it's an overlay.
Sure, sure.
So, the base zoning is residential.
But if, once, once we approve this, it becomes special use for the church, not for?
It can be. It can remain single-family, or they can do a religious organization there.
Got it. Okay. But your intention is to actually turn it into offices and not to have it as a rental property anymore?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I too drive by the garage sale house all the time. Okay, understand. Thank you. Those are the only questions.
Why don't you just hang up there just for a second? Commissioner Bounce?
My only thing would be to reiterate not using the Bradford pear, just because it's so bad, but that's just a preference. And I'll get, I'll mix into the fray. I don't mind.
Okay, noted. No Bradford pears. I got it.
Anything else? That is? Commissioner Mann?
I sure love oaks. No, everybody's pretty much covered all this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hinckley?
Not really. As part of a for or against it, but just a question maybe for you. But why just do this one lot, or why aren't we doing the whole property?
We discussed it, and we kind of went back and forth. I don't know that I have the exact answer, why we're doing just the admin and not the entirety of it. I think maybe because their sanctuary plans just aren't.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Our sanctuary plans are not developed yet, and even the cost for moving forward on that development is something that we're still kind of raising funds to do. And of course, we want to do as quick as we can to get out of being a temporary or a portable church. But that was just a bigger piece of the pie for us, and so, definitely would be next on the list, but that was the reason why we decided to do this separately, and it just happened to be a separate plot of one acre, and so, we thought it was a possibility.
That's all good. Like I said, it had nothing to do with my decision. I just was curious.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
You went first. Okay, so, on to me. I don't think that I have a question for you, so I will let you sit down, sir.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
But I'm gonna turn my attention to Becky. Becky, I just want, just for the record on this, that there are eight requirements for specific use permits, and I mean, I go through, and I believe that they meet, and they range, I'm not gonna read them all for essence of time, but, you know, it's light, it's about lighting, it's about adequate utilities and access road, that the specific use will not impede the normal orderly development of the surrounding property. Knowing how thorough you and your group is, I'm assuming, it looks like it's reasonable that all these have been met and looked at. I'm just at the record that those have been looked at, and this specific use meets all those requirements.
Yes, sir. The point of a specific use permit is normally, they're uses that are what we consider heavy hitters. They're heavy traffic, you know, high occupancy, which for the admin buildings, not an issue, but for, say, a church or a school, or, you know, any kind of large venue-type space. So, that's, that's the purpose of the specific use permit, just to give the city an extra set of eyes on it, to make sure that we're, you know, staff's not missing anything, so it's good for to get.
But also that that use does not interfere with the enjoyment or the economic viability of the property around it, so.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just double-checking for the record. With that, I have noth, oh, yes, sir. Commissioner Sassen? No, I'm done, sir.
So, I was just gonna come back. The four-foot sidewalk was on your plat, on the drawing, comment number 20, or item number 20, on that said four-foot sidewalk to be constructed along FM 528. So, I just wanted to make sure that was addressed at some point in the future, that it's intended to be five foot.
Okay.
Okay. If we, yeah, it's on the drawing number, yeah. Yeah, on the, on the, on the final plat of the subdivision. So, anyway, okay, item 20. That's all I had.
So, the question then becomes procedurally, do we need to amend the motion to if, to double-check that?
No, they're, they're looking at the plat, the backup documentation. This is gonna supersede the plat. So, no, you don't need to. So no, you don't need to make any comments.
Okay, got it. So what?
Their application, their drawing is correct. The plat that was previously approved says a four-foot sidewalk. So either that was a typo or text dot used to require a four-foot for some reason. So, no, it's not germane to this application.
Will we, will, will we see anything else on this? Or is this our approval?
This is your approval on this one. Cause it's already platted.
Okay. Okay. So what they've, what they've shown is correct, so we don't need to amend the motion. So we have a motion in the second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay. Our next action item is a request for a zone classification change from planned unit development 2017-12 zoning district to a single-family residential zoning district for a tract of land located on West Edgewood Drive, FM 2351, being a 4.621 acre tract of land out of Lot 2 in Block 1 of Friendswood, a subdivision out of the Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151, in Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. The public hearing to receive comments both oral and written regarding the proposed zone classification change is now open. Becky, could you please provide the staff summary?
Uh, yes, sir. So this piece of property is 4.6 acres on West Edgewood Drive or FM 2351. Uh, it's between Garden Drive and Woodlawn. The closest landmark that everybody's probably familiar with is gonna be the Red Top Restaurant. It's kinda catty corner across the street. So the change would be from a planned unit development to single-family residential. The current planned unit development was put in place, uh, in 2017? Oh, look, I do have a typo right there. That's supposed to be 2017. So it was changed to a three-use, it was a very specific, uh, plan. So it was assisted living, memory care, and independent living. Prior to that, this property has been rezoned multiple times. It originally went from single-family to multifamily, uh, back to single-family, then to business park, and then they cut half the business park off and made it half-single-family. So it's, this has been a bit of a, um, a difficult piece of property. Uh, it is currently surrounded by a variety of zoning districts. Uh, to the south and the west are single-family properties. And then to the northeast is a mobile home park, which we only have two of those in the city. And then there is a small tract up on the front corner that is community shopping center that I believe is a acupunctureist maybe right now? So on the future land use map, this property is identified as retail because it does go down 2351. Um, if the zone change is approved, then the future land use map would also be amended. Uh, they have access and they have availability to water sewer and onsite detention will be required.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for, up here? Thank you very much. I did miss that. Does, would the applicant or applicant representative like to speak at this time? Yes, sir. Please, if you could step forward, let, tell us your name, please, once you're up here.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bijan Sidhughey and my partner, Jason Richmond. We are Sorrento builders. We have been in luxury home building between us close to 50 years. And, uh, we have this parcel of land, 4.62 acres, with the, um, 330 feet of a frontage and 610, I believe, um, the length of it. It's not in a flood zone. And, um, to be frank with you, we would have liked that to be commercial, so we'll make more money out of that. But, um, we had a meeting with, um, text dot, text dot department. And, um, we found out that because it's, um, right across from this property is a school zone. And there is a school there. And again, to the right, to the right of the property is a single-family residence. Left of it, as the Becky, Ms. Becky mentioned, is the acupuncture. And there is a heavy traffic on that street. It would not have made sense, considering all this, it would not have made sense to, text dot would have rejected that, to go with a commercial for us. So we decided to, um, start looking into luxury home, single-family homes. Because right behind this property is Montebello, uh, community. And they are really luxury homes and it would have looked even bad for them to be wall-to-wall with a commercial right there. So we are proposing, um, and we are gonna comply with all the city requirements for this. We are proposing, uh, because of the size of the property, we are proposing 12 exceeding city requirements, 12 single-family homes with the gated community luxury homes and the, um, common driveway with a cone-shaped kind of, at the end of it, pop, with a lollipop kind of a shape, you know? And the, um, with a large 60, I, I believe you have a 60-feet radius, 60-feet radius. So it's gonna be a very large, nice for the, um, fire trucks to be coming and going. Again, these would be, um, single-family homes. A luxury two-stories with a nice lot size. And, uh, we have been building in Galleria area, in Memorial area, all type of luxury homes. So we intend to have these homes to look really good for the neighborhood. And especially because we are right with the Montebello luxury homes there. So, Jason, if you have anything to comment regarding this, you're gonna, you're gonna...
He's the fancy guy. I'm the linebacker. I wanna go get bloody, you know? He's the quarterback. I'm the linebacker. So if you wanna hear from me, I...
Well, hopefully, we're not, we're not in opposition, so we're on your, we're on your team, I think. Okay.
I got this plan that Mr. Lady, she, she, she redlined it and she said, this one will work. And I think it will work, uh, from text dot.
If you could step up to, if you're gonna, if you're gonna speak, could you speak to that?
Well, Jason is having, um, a problem.
I apologize, but we can't, we'll, we have, we have four or five people that might listen to this on, online.
On YouTube?
Yeah, on YouTube, and they'll never hear you if you're back there, and I wanna make sure that everybody gets to hear what you have to say.
Okay, well, I think TCU should win the national championship. I said that last time when I met her, didn't I? And they said, oh, no, ain't gonna happen. I said, look what's going on now. Anyhow, so look, this is a commercial property zone. Only got 330 feet wide. It don't make sense for commercial. I know that's what you wanted. I tried to make it happen, but text dot say no. So the best thing to do is to make it, uh, highest and best use is a high-end commercial, I mean, residential. We're gonna put 12 houses in there. It's what we wanna do. 12 houses, minimum lot size 12,000 square foot up to 18,000 square foot. Average sales price, uh, $325 to $350 per square foot. So it's gonna be a $20 million development. This is the highest that's used for the property. The edge of the property to the right, I guess you would call it, the west side, isn't it? Yeah, it's right there on the edge of the, of the school zone. So people gain, and, and, and other thing, we wanna ask this group here. If we are allowed to do this, we wanna put a flashing light through text dot in that same area because people just go up and down like bloody murder. I don't know if you've been over there at Mr. Lee's place, but we have been a couple times. And people just go up and down there like, and don't pay attention to the speed limit. So what we're proposing is just, we're gonna re, redevelop this. We're gonna put the detention under the street. We're gonna have to re-drudge the, you know, the bar ditch, what do you wanna call it? Yeah. So we're gonna have all that on the, on the east side. We're gonna have to follow that, uh, what do you call? The, where, where the sewer line goes all the way back into that other corner. That right corner, that's where the sewer drop goes into Montebello. We're gonna have to dig it down probably about 25 feet, re-dig it and put a new, uh, connection, probably for them. I know, I'm, I'm, I'm the, I know what I'm talking about. We're gonna, we're gonna have to dig it down and put a whole new connection in there. Then we're also gonna have to have the electrical company, all the electrical that going up and down that street, West Edgewood. It's all leaning still since Hurricane Harvey. Go, go drive it.
Okay, no, I believe, so sir, sir, I think...
Straighten this and fix all that.
I, I think you've given us enough information, sir, for, for, at this time. We're gonna call you back up and ask you some more questions in a little bit, but for the zone change, if you're talking about very specific...
That's all we're here for. That's all we're here for. But I'm telling you, we know what we're doing. He's a master builder. I'm a master builder. I'm Tuscan Homes. He's Bijan. I built in Memorial. He built in, 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 uh, Galleria. I've built like 20,000 square foot houses. I know what I'm talking about.
I think you've introduced the, the subject, which is all that this part is about.
That's all I'm trying to do here.
No, no, and I think you've done a fine job of it, sir. I think we're good for now.
All right, no worries.
But we will call you up with any questions that we have, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Okay, seeing no one, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Uh, if you could come up and, and state your name, sir?
Yeah, my name's George Gergis. I live at 407 West Edgewood. I'm not really against it. I'll just be clear in stating that right up front, but I do have some concerns on water retention and where that's gonna go. I mean, through Harvey and all the recent rainstorms, we haven't had any issues with our property. I'd like to keep it that way, so that's a big concern of mine. The other piece, which I don't necessarily agree with with regards to the traffic issue is, that road is bad. And I think we all know that. 2351 is a, you know, zero-to-60 racetrack really for a lot of kids, and we've all seen it. With the school district, with the school right there, I, I think, if it were commercial, I don't think it would be that bad from a traffic perspective, quite honestly, because we've got that shopping center that's right down the street that doesn't actually put that many cars into the road. I am a little bit worried with 12 homes, you know, if you say an average of three cars per home, there's gonna be a lot more cars kinda hitting the street in and out. An area of concern, I'm just flagging that more, you know, as a, as a local than anything else. But the water piece is probably my biggest concern with that. I'd love to see what that plan looks like. So, that's it.
We, um, it's not necessarily necessary, but if you wouldn't mind, would you, you said your address? I'm trying to figure out where you live in relation to...
I live right adjacent to the property.
An extra four.
I share, I share.
Oh, 407, okay, now I understand. I missed that. I was, okay, perfect.
So, so that, you know, like I said, the water issue is a big one for me, and then obviously whatever we do in terms of the fencing and landscaping, I'd like to see what those look like as well. So, kind of a vested interest in this one.
Absolutely.
Everyone does.
And, and to y'all, and you know, we've got a lot of big, beautiful oaks in the area. To me, that's one of the main reasons why I bought the property that we just bought a few months ago. The property they have as well has a lot of big, beautiful oaks. I'd love for them to stay too.
Yeah.
Can I respond? Do I have the right to respond?
Not, not at this time. We'll, we'll ask you some questions.
No, I'd like to respond.
Well, not at this time, sir. It's not part of our process, but I, I will, you will get a...
I, I got all his answers right now.
You can, you can definitely talk to him after the meeting, sir. That would be great. Okay, the, seeing no one else that would like to speak against or for at this time, the public hearing for this topic is now closed. The commission will now consider making a recommendation on the requested zone classification change. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve? Second?
Becky, just following up with you. Anything additional that came to mind?
Uh, not that I can think of.
Commissioner Rives?
I don't have a lot to say other than... It's surrounded by residential and eventually the, the mobile home park theoretically would go away over time. I know there's restrictions about putting new ones in there, so I'm, I'm just thinking it would fit better if it was, if it stayed residential. I don't, I'd like to see how you're gonna fit 12 houses and the drainage and everything there, but that's a different conversation for a different day. So I'm, I'm leaning towards it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, so, I came in kinda thinking, uh, that the right answer on here is commercial. You, you did address some of, of those issues. Can, can I ask you to come back up again? If you don't mind? So there was a comment that text dot said you couldn't make a commercial. That sounds bizarre to me.
No, not the certain text.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, text, text dot didn't tell us that we shouldn't have a commercial. It's our understanding is because of the school zone, having a commercial over there would actually increase traffic for the residential next to it.
So you were concerned about adding traffic to FM 2351 and as a good citizen, you didn't wanna do that?
There's a sign of a school zone sign, end of a school zone just before the lot. So there will be, uh, people gonna take off right away. And it's not gonna be good because if you have a commercial over there, it will be number of people coming in and out of commercial would be lot more than having residential.
Than having 12 houses.
Yeah, 12 houses is, how many people, for example, during the day come out of the house or get out of the gate? But can you imagine if you have a two-story medical building? There will be lot more traffic.
So you're, you're concerned about traffic?
Adding to the traffic to the busy street.
As a good neighbor, you were trying to minimize traffic on FM 2351 and, and, okay, I misunderstood your, your...
And then, um, may I also comment to the objection that was made regarding the detention and the drainage?
If you wanna, if you wanna speak to the drainage, I was gonna ask you about it anyway. So if you're, since you're up here, if you wanted to have a quick comment about drainage, I'd love to hear it.
First of all, we are gonna comply with the city requirements, which is .55 of an acre. So basically, we're gonna have a heavy drainage put into, put in, yeah, put into the place. And the second thing is that this lot is not in flood zone. And we are very fortunate to have a lot of this size, not on, in the flood zone. So we are very comfortable that we're gonna comply with it and we're gonna have a good drainage in there. And, um, also the...
So your plan for the property wasn't really in the backup material, may not have been ready yet. So if I understand you right, you're gonna put one road kinda right down through the middle of the property?
Exactly.
And then put a, a turnaround on that and you'll have houses on both sides, probably six on each side?
Exactly. With the landscaping and also we're gonna preserve the trees also.
And, well, you're gonna lose most of the nice oaks right around the street, but yeah.
Yeah, actually, we do have, actually, we do have some... Yes. We are not gonna tear down, we are gonna preserve it, yes. Exactly.
No, no, no. Thank, thank you, sir. Okay, you understand? Okay, well, I wanna, because if I'm confused, you're, you can sit down for now. Thank you, sir. I, I just wanna follow up with your question because, and since we're on that topic of, of text dot, I don't want us to head off on a, a rabbit trail here of a topic. Becky, can you help give us some insight in this? Cause my understanding would be what they, what they've asked for is a zone change and text dot has nothing to do with that zone change? Or is this some peculiar situation that I'm unaware of?
I am not aware of text dot getting involved in any type of zoning.
But if I can understand the concern by the developer of traffic and if that's, but, okay. So in our zone request, text dot, um, or any, anything similar entity doesn't impact zoning request?
No, sir. The only, the only time text dot will come into play is when they develop. Uh, they will need text dot permits for drainage outfall, utility connections, sidewalk... They will need Techstart permits for drainage outfall, utility connections, sidewalk and driveway.
So they have, there is, they do have some stake in this? Okay.
Uh, yes, sir. Eventually, when it gets to the design portion, but not for the zoning.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I, can I say something? I don't know how this works, but we've met with...
If you, sir, if you're going to tell us...
My name is Jason Richmond.
Yes, sir. If you could step to the microphones, so we can hear you?
Sorry, my, my leg's acting...
I, I apologize for giving you up and down. Thank you.
So we've met with the Techstart twice. And the preliminary plans that I do all the time, I do it by hand. I'm like, "Oh, it's cool." And I went over there, we've been over there, Mr., me and Bijon, we're both custom builders. And we took it over there, and I tried to do the commercial. And I put a medical facility in the front and drew it out by hand, you know, ruler, this and that. Because I have clients. They would put a, some kind of facility in there, like, you know? And then the lady said without saying, they didn't like it. Now, I'm not saying she said no to, 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 to Mr. Becky over here. But I'm telling you, they like residential. They said without saying. I read without listening. This is what they say. They want one entrance there, considering how close it is to the school zone. Right? People are going to go from 20 miles an hour, what, to 35? And like Mr. Bijon said, if you put a medical facility in there, you're going to have a 30,000 per day. Maybe if it's successful commercial, that's the type of people you're going to have coming in and out. Then you're going to have to have a traffic study, and you're going to have to have all this and this and that. And you're going to be 150 feet from the school zone. And they're not going to approve it, Techstart. In my opinion, I'm not the boss. I'm saying that if you put in there 12 houses, and yes, it can be done, and be more than the 11,600 square foot, which is your minimum, and have 112,000 cubic feet of detention. And we're going to go and make all your infrastructure better, because all your drainage in the front is no good.
Okay. No, you, you've answered, I think you've answered our question.
This is what Techstart prefers. And they didn't say, "No, bring us this." No, they didn't say that.
So this is, this is an area that is completely within your control, and you can make your decisions using any, any, any information that, that you want. I just wanted to make sure, understand that were there any restrictions on us from the zoning? Now I understand that there is not...
We just asked for a change of zone, but we was asked to come here in case you guys want to figure out who the, who we are.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. We got the insurance. I already sent it to her. I got 25 years' experience. So do we.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's okay.
What we're talking about, yeah, what you're proposing is not really on the agenda. What we're really proposing is, should this be single-family residential? Or should it stay where it is now? It's not a dialogue, sorry, sir.
No, I got you.
It's not a dialogue, sir, sir.
I got you.
So what I would have liked to have seen, is what you've kind of addressed early.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see the front 25, 30% be commercial, and the rest be single-family residential behind there.
That's exactly what we tried to do.
Which is what, what I would prefer. It's not a dialogue, sir, thank you.
Oh, okay.
The, but I understand the, the problems you're going through trying to do that. It looks like you tried to address that, and, and it is a challenging property. The, if this were to go forward as single-family residential, there's no exceptions to it. It'd still be 90-foot lots like we have on our requirement, and 120-foot depth or whatever it is that we require for a single family? There's no exemptions asked for that, aren't there, Becky?
No, this would be standard minimum 90-foot lots if it's curb and gutter streets. And they will have to do a buffer along 2351, because it is in the community overlay district.
Got it. Okay. And a sidewalk.
And a sidewalk.
We'll put the sidewalk. I don't, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is not a dialogue, sir. Thank you.
I'm cool, I'm cool. It's like, it's better him talk sometime.
I'm, I'm done.
Commissioner Kerner?
So the question I have is actually for, for Becky.
On the future land use map, what is the, the targeted use ultimately of that area that is the mobile homes?
Ooh, that's a good question. Um, let me see if it's on...
I understand that this is owned retail, but...
I would assume, just off the top of my head, is that it is mobile home. I don't see...
There is no intended change, because I thought I heard a comment earlier about eventually that will go away.
And I didn't know if that was because it was, there was a change in the future land use? No, no, ma'am.
Or where it is today, or if that was someone just pontificating and speculating about their future?
That was me speculating.
It's color orange right now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. It's, it doesn't show any change on the future land use map.
Okay.
The, the mobile home zoning is, very rarely goes away, once it's there.
Once it's there, right.
It's just such a moneymaker that it's, it's rare for those operators to give those facilities up.
Okay. I, I just wanted to understand, right? Because I think, to me, the most powerful statement that was made, right, is that on basically three sides of this property today is residential. And so it seems like a very odd thing that we would have put this as retail in the future land use map. Now, I certainly do like the idea of maybe the front end being retail, but if that causes problems for the developer and makes it untenable, I understand that as well. So that's, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Rehauen?
Yes, my, this is not for or against whether it's going to be commercial or single-family residential, but I travel that road all the time, and there's going to have to be some kind of center lane for, for people to go in and out of that, because otherwise, it's just going to back up traffic both ways. So I think that just needs to be considered for future. That's all.
Got it. Yes, sir. Commissioner Mann?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Hinckley?
I guess I, I'd like to stick kind of what we have in the future land use map, but I do see the whole point of the residential on each side, so...
It's not on all sides, just one side.
Yeah, correct. Or, no, residential's on three sides?
Yeah, commercial's on, well, on the frontage. It's on one side and stuff. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm kind of stuck on the land use map, but at the same time, I understand, so give it a consideration.
Okay. Then remains for my comments. Yeah, I, I think I agree. I'm trying to think if I have anything to add that hasn't already been discussed. But I, I think this is a unique property in its current state of development and location. I think it could go either way. And it obviously has shown since 1970 to have gone both from single-family to multifamily to business park to PUD. It's gone, you know, everybody has, it, it could go either way. And you, as the, the property owner and developer of this, I will leave it to your best interest to do what's in your best economic interest to do. So I think it'll be fine, as a, as a business, I think it's fine, commercial, and I think it's fine as, as residential. Sounds like you've looked at other options, so I have no further questions.
Is I talking?
I, I think we're, I think we're...
Oh, I want to talk.
Well, sir, I...
Who's standing? He want to talk?
I, I, I understand, sir, but I think we're ready to vote. So I, I, I don't think we have any further questions for you. So if you just, we, we glad to talk to you after the meeting, further if there's something else.
This is the first meeting. It's okay.
That, that's, yes, sir.
You got another one in January.
That's, yes, sir, you do. Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor shows to be unanimous. So thanks, everybody, for explaining, taking their time and explaining all that to us.
Thank you, sir. So tell us what's going on with me.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing?
Next on our agenda is communications. And the way the agenda was published, I'm just going to alert everybody, it's going to, we're going to go in a little bit different order, but it, it all gets there. We're going to start under communications with our DRC report.
Uh, yes, sir. So the November 2022 DRC report was in y'all's backup. If you have any questions, feel free to, you know, let me know. Updates of city council actions and ordinance considerations. We did not have any P and Z items on council's last agenda, so y'all are free until next month. And then, oh, that's y'all. Updates from the Drainage District, if anybody has attended. I know since our retreat, I don't know if you want to talk about the changes that we discussed at the retreat as far as Drainage District attendance?
We, we, we can, since you brought it, brought it up. That was actually the next item on the agenda, but okay.
Well, then I...
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. It's, it's all good.
I am done with...
I, I still owe Kevin Holland a call and, or go by and talk to him. I have not done that with everything else going on, but I will. I've taken that on to, to go do that. So we, we have elected not, as, as we decided in our workshop, we're going to try to not have a lies on there unless they so request our presence there. Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
So I'm scheduled to go next week. Do I need to go or not?
No, no, sir. No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
And just to also remind y'all, staff gets the agendas for the Drainage District. We get their approval letters from the Drainage District, and we are in constant communication. So we, we do know what's going on, and they can always reach out to us if they need to.
Councilmember Hanks, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome. Very interesting tonight. I've been texting my... Does y'all...
She's going to walk up there to say that I don't really have anything. I can just read. Okay, thank, thank you.
Thanks for a good retreat.
There you go. Okay, we're going to continue our communications with comments from our commissioners. I'll start on this end with Commissioner Rives. Commissioner Hinckley?
Nothing.
Commissioner Mann?
Good job tonight. I thought that we articulated ourselves and, and addressed the community, which is what we should be doing. So, nice work.
Commissioner Sassen?
I agree with Commissioner Mann.
Commissioner Kerner?
Let's see, if this is our last meeting of the year? No, we have one more. Okay, then disregard. Nothing else.
Commissioner Rehauen?
Yes, I just want to say, if we have some people still out there, if any of the ladies feel uncomfortable walking outside, please let us know. We will walk with you to your vehicles. And I did, as a new person, I learned a lot tonight. It was really enlightening, listening to everybody speak about the subjects, because from my perspective, I, at first, I was leaning one way, but once I realized what was going on and, and what was at stake, then I, I fell in and I agreed with it, kind of, kind of changed my mind. So thank you all.
Oh, I thought, I thought everybody's comments were, were well-done and good questions. It was a, a difficult topic, wasn't the, the answer I think some of them wanted, but I think we came to, well, almost near-unanimous decision, right? Yep, yep, so, okay. With that, we will move on to staff's updates. Aubrey? Oh, no, Aubrey's not here. Becky? Aubrey? Aubrey, no.
Should we call her and see what she's doing at 9:00 in Utah?
Sorry, Becky.
So the next regular meeting is going to be December 22nd. We do have a few items. I know that some of y'all are going to be gone. You're going to have to remind me who is and is not going to be here.
I will not, I will not be here.
You will not be here.
I'm heading out of town.
I will not be here.
Okay, no Joe, no Travis.
I will.
Okay.
I will.
I'm here.
Okay, we definitely are going to need at least four, preferably five, pretty please, so... Okay.
Okay, five, great.
And then after that, we will do the, well, you are more than welcome to attend, but you don't have to. City Council is going to be the night. It'll be the public hearings for everything that we did tonight. And then after that, we will meet again on January 12th.
And we will need to start working on the recommendation letters from tonight quickly, I guess.
Yes.
Karen, anything from your... Okay. Okay, our final communication item is to announce the next Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, which I guess you did, the 22nd and the 12th.
I'm out of order.
It's all right. Yeah, you, no. So you talked about the 22nd. I don't know that you talked about the 12th, but those are our next two. With that, thanks to everybody very much for, for a long meeting, a good meeting. And the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting of December 8th is now adjourned.
Those are at 7:00, correct?